But I forget how old I am. That's the first thing that goes.
All right, we're going to call the July 14th Public Services Department Workshop to Order. Commissioner Smith's going to do the prayer and the pledge, please.
Let's assume the attitude of prayer. Most gracious in our Almighty God, Creator of every good and perfect gift and the gift of all mankind, we come now to say thank you for this opportunity to come before you to protect other budget for this afternoon in the city of Apokka. We ask now, Lord, for your guidance and for your blessings for the presenters of God as they prepare their budget for this upcoming year. We realize, Father, that we're in the middle of a pandemic and that funds is short, but we know that our God is able to make all things possible. So we ask now if you bless with God this council, this mayor, that we do the things for God and be pleasing in your sight for the best citizens in this city of Apokka. This we pray in thy son Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, this is going to be a tag-team effort here tonight. We got Edward or who's, you have the batting order here on?
Yeah, let me kind of, if you'll give me a second. What I want to do is kind of explain how we're going to, how we're going to do it. So what I thought, so what we, what staff has laid out, we've worked really hard together. As you know, we, I am currently the acting Public Works Director because we are in the middle of a transition for a Public Works Director. We have landed one.
A good one.
So, a good one, has a lot of experience in traffic, roads, streets, lights, and comes from Houston, Texas. So retiring to Florida and wants to kind of go down to a little, little slower pace. So he has a lot of expertise and will be, he'll be coming onboard next month. So, but anyway, so in the meantime, what we've done real quick and I'll, have asked all the managers, we've been working together, they've worked really hard on their budgets, they have their wish list, we've put a PowerPoint together, and I've asked each one of them to do their, go over the stuff in their division. I think it's good for them to be able to tell you, show you where, where the rubber meets the road, you know, what their people are doing and what they want, what they need for their people. Some of these things, these wish lists are long-term, but I think it's important that you know where we're headed into the future. What do we need as we, like you saw with place and fire, as we move into the future? So each one of them have prepared their, their presentations in order to also social distancing. I've asked each one of them, we've kind of got them in an order of trying to let them go as quickly as possible as they finish so they don't have to, to stay around for the whole presentation once they're done with theirs, and also to be able to kind of keep that, that distance. But each one of them has their, their portion. I have a few pieces that I will do from the administrative side, so that's kind of how we want to move through it. So, with that being said, and I gave you a handout so that you could see, I know Commissioner Becker doesn't have a screen, so you have a handout if you can't see it because it's a little, little tough up there.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so real quick, I wanted to kind of just give some statistics. And I, let me say this too, as they move through, what we've done is rather than go through every single line, because some of the small stuff, it's just, it's just, it doesn't, it doesn't really make sense to go through the small stuff. And like you pointed out last, yesterday, some of it's contractual, some of the things are, they're ongoing, they happen no matter what. I asked them to kind of go through their budgets and look at the things that actually, where were the significant increases, decreases? Where did they look for efficiencies? Have they moved people around to, to, to maybe cover some compliance issues and things that we haven't been doing? You'll be able to see that. So they're focusing on those areas. If, as you move through the presentation, you see something in a light item that you have some, some issue with or whatever, be more than happy to, to stop and go through those as we go. But I've asked them to look at it from that level so we can spend time on the things that we can actually, that, that show the efficiencies and show the increases and decreases in the budget. So I think what's very important is, I think it's, it's good to lay kind of the foundation of actually what Public Works really does and how much stuff they handle. From a fleet maintenance standpoint, they have about 1,200 vehicles and equipment that they maintain. Number of households served for sanitation is about 17,000. Tons of garbage collected, 39 tons per year. Street miles maintained, we have 100, almost 200 miles of streets that we are responsible for and maintaining. Traffic signals, the city's responsible for about 40 traffic lights that are our responsibility. Pipelines that are, that are main, or miles of pipelines that are maintained, there's a 910 miles of pipelines. 357 are water, approximately 272 are sewer, 119 miles of storm water, and reclaimed water's about 162 miles. Just short of 1,900 fire hydrants that we're responsible for. Water and reclaimed meters, almost 33,000 water and reclaimed meters, that's together. Wastewater lift stations, 145 lift stations that, that have to be maintained by maintenance. The average water, average daily consumption of water, 8.3 million gallons a day. The wastewater treated each, on a daily average, 3.2 million gallons. And the reclaimed water, that's an average daily consumption of reclaimed water is about 6.5 million gallons. So with that, I'll turn it over to Charles because he's our fleet manager and let him do his, do work through the fleet section.
Charles Stevenson, Fleet Superintendent. Right now, Fleet currently employs 13 employees, 10 of which are mechanics on the floor. And as of January 1st, we have done 1,063 work orders, which comes out to 106 work orders per employee, just, just at this time. And with that being said, Fleet also has eight units with the average age of 20 years old that we're currently utilizing that we need to try and upgrade. We have a 1990 Dodge pickup truck that really needs to be upgraded. We're trying to get a used Caterpillar service truck to replace it.
Where is the picture? You're supposed to show us the picture of that.
It's in there.
Right there.
Yeah, there we go.
You see that fine piece of equipment? We're going, we'll park it in front of the museum if you'd like. But yeah, we do, we do need to upgrade that service truck as it was an old ambulance to begin with. So we have pretty much repurposed about everything we can at this time. And with that being said, the fleet building, we would like to upgrade the fleet building within the next few coming years. Long-term project, as the city's grown, Fleet Department really has not. And with the new fire equipment, the new garbage trucks, all being bigger, then we can't facilitate maintenance in them anymore inside the shops as the buildings have gotten too small. So we're kind of tripping on each other and getting a little tight. Let's see. With that, like, like Mr. Edward said, we've, we're servicing about 1,200 vehicles and, and equipment per year. That's what we maintain on a daily basis, keeping the city going. And that's pretty much about all I have at this point that I'm looking for.
Any, any questions for Charles? They, they do an amazing job down there. They are, they're always looking at ways to, you know, keep the equipment running smooth and, and, you know, preventative maintenance is really their, their, you know, the key to that, that department. And so his team really does a super job.
No, so the, the, the new service building, that's actually in the budget, that's not a wishlist item, right?
Well, it is a wishlist, but it's, we, we put it in there because if we don't talk about it, nobody knows about it.
Okay.
But yes, in the next three to five years, we do need to move into a bigger building.
Like the, like the, the big fire truck won't fit in?
The tower, new tower truck stands about 15 foot outside of our building. We can't even close the doors. So it puts the mechanics out in the sun, trying to work on the ladder out there.
And would the plan be to just re, sit on the existing footprint, just raise the current and then just reconstruct?
Probably would be better to build in a new location. Still keep it down in public services, but build a bigger building so that streets, grounds can utilize our two buildings that are currently are standing.
Commissioner Smith?
I'm good.
Good. Mr. Becker?
Yeah, just seems that the whole presentation today, it looks like that's a lot of the need that we have is infrastructure and equipment.
Yes, sir.
Mainly replacing those things, so hopefully we can dig in and find as much as we can for you all. And I will keep my questions to a minimum today, so we're not here until midnight.
It's all good.
Awesome. Thank you, Charles.
Thank you.
Next up, I guess we got Josh. Josh, you next?
Mayor, Commissioners? Let's see here. Sanitation. Okay, so obviously sanitation provides the garbage and recycling pickup residentially and then the garbage pickup for commercial. We do about 39,000 tons a year. That's about almost 6,000 tons more than when I started, the first budget I did five years ago.
Oh, wow.
We've kept the same level of staffing and we still have 18, same as last year. And same as, I don't, really haven't been able to find how long before I got here we've had that same number of individuals. And we, we average, it's just kind of a rule of thumb, a ton per hour. And so you can do the math there. Let's see where we, where we are. The increases in the budget, about 13 and a half overall in supplies, the professional services, that 15,000 increase was for, is for rate study and looking at the operations of recycling, you know, different, different collection types we might consider. Contractual services, that's up 23. That's mostly from a, added a truck wash contractor. Currently, we kind of wash the trucks weekly ourselves, but the, the style truck we're using now has two big cylinders, hydraulic cylinders, about $10,000 worth of them in each truck. And all that material that builds up in them over the, over the week really needs a good steam cleaning. And I think at that, that rate, and a lot of the, the failures on those are from dirt and grit accumulating in there, so I think we would get our return pretty easily on, on that, that service. Utility services, 120,000 over last year. About 90,000 of that is from the additional cost of recycling processing. We went from 49 a ton and according to Orange County, it looks like we're going to be somewhere in the 80s a ton next year after the, their current contract runs out and they, they renew it. Vehicle maintenance, 55K up. That's basically just increase in operating hours, which means increase in tires, fuel, PM service. Temp labor's up 70. We kind of tried an experiment, you know, previously to, to drop back to one temp per truck. That doesn't really work. Hard to keep help, they just can't keep pace either, so we're, we're going back to the way we were before, so that brings that back in line to previous years. Operating supplies, that's just an increase in mostly dumpsters. We did add some 25,000 for bear cans. Some of that was offset by we've, we've done a good job. We've actually decreased the number of garbage cart replacements by about 800 work orders year over year. And largely due to upgrading our equipment, new trucks, they're not as hard on the cans. And so good savings there, but we, we, we had a spike in the dumpster usage and then adding the 25,000 for the bear carts. We kind of started that program with a grant and then kind of, you know, for replacements and then to be able to continue to offer, we're going to try to keep a few in. Fuel and gasoline, again, just to increase in the operating hours. Capital outlay, 400,000 over last year. That basically includes the remaining 370 from the truck we put the $70,000 down payment on last year for our side loader. And then one, one additional at 400,000 is the estimate for it this year. And that'll replace the last two 07s. Those are 16-year-old trucks with roughly eight-year useful life, so they're way beyond. And there's, we use them as spares now, so we would, you know, rotate the, the next oldest ones to spares and run, run the new ones to replace those. But the, the spares, we, on a given week, we run both of them almost every, every week. And I'm sure you don't want to be out in your yard talking to your neighbor when that beast comes by, you know? It's just not very pretty. And then we, we put a 20,000 in to, you know, do a little paving upgrades. That's, I don't know if you can make out from the picture, but that's our little washpad and it's just all busted up and water can escape it, so we need to do some, a little bit of maintenance on that. And yeah, so overall, the budget is up, what does that say? 20, about 24%. Couple other items that aren't on there, tomorrow night I think I'll talk about, we're, we're going to ask for a rate increase on the solid waste. We're by far some, some of the lowest rates residentially and commercially in the area, and I'll show you some more details about that. And so we're wanting to do a 3% on the residential and a 6% increase on the commercial rates. And then next, the next meeting then we'll also, I'll ask for two additional people for it and I'll, I'll try to justify that, that expense at that point. I'll give you more details on that. I thought we'd wait till after the budget, after the rate increase to discuss those items. So, questions? Any questions for Josh?
I don't have a question, but I do have a, an inquiry from a resident and wanted to know if it was possible for the sanitation department to provide a service to wash out the containers maybe once a month or something?
Um, yeah. For, for, for a fee.
Well, yes, they understood it would be a cost.
That's, yeah, that's the service we can look at. There, in fact, there's quite a few. You're seeing that type of, that we could set up to do it ourselves. And we can also give them the numbers of, there's several smaller outfits here locally that, that actually provide that. They have a truck that comes by with a water tank in it and they tip the carts into the truck, spray it out with a pressure washer, disinfectant, wipe it off. And I think it's about 14 bucks a month for, for most of those is what they're running.
All right. Well, if you send me those, those numbers and if that's something that maybe we can generate some income, if we provide the service as well, we can look at that as also. Thank you.
Just curious, on the number of households served was 17,000 in the opening, opening presentation, aren't there more homes than that that we have? And if, if we're not serving them, where, how are they getting rid of their garbage?
No. Well, are you looking, because you're probably looking at the meters because the meters kind of go inside, coincide too?
Okay, so.
Just sit, sit in there in your initial.
Yeah, there were 17 and you have about 33,000 meters because you know you have two meters. Some, a lot of homes have two meters. So, but 17 is, is residential, is roughly the residential.
So that's about, okay, I was just thinking.
That's about the number of residential.
I'm wondering, okay.
And, and, and because some places have dumpsters, so they wouldn't be in that, that 17. That's a separate number that Josh keeps for.
Well, and you also provide water outside of our service.
That's true too. Those meters, some of those meters are county, we provide water to the county, some county customers, but they still would have county garbage. So that's why there's a discrepancy between.
And obviously with the new growth coming, we're projecting for that in, in these budget increases to make sure we're ready to handle it when it comes.
Absolutely.
I think eight, 10 new developments in the ground right now, so yeah.
Hey Edward, just go back to Fleet real quick. And my confusion when I asked the question about the shop, on page 41 or 40, however you want to look at it, it's on a formal, it's on the 6,300 fund for Fleet. So that was what was driven, because of like the police and fire from yesterday, if it was a wishlist item, it was on a wishlist sheet.
Right.
So I was interpreting this as being in budget, but this is considered a wishlist item?
Yeah, this is a wishlist item. Unfortunately, it did get on that sheet, I know that you're talking about, because that sheet was keyed in the very beginning when we put everything in. The sheet that you have, the packet that you have tomorrow, which is where the millage rate will be set, it excludes that piece. So we're trying to make that clear too tonight to, to tell you which pieces are in, which pieces are out. But your packet for Wednesday will show that it's, it's been excluded.
All right. Thanks, Josh. Appreciate it. Next up, Mr. Earp.
Good afternoon. I'm trying on my new hat for the first time.
There you go.
So I'm going to.
You wear it well.
Thank you. Streets and what, right-of-way maintenance. So I'll first go through the activities and the programs managed. We've got the street maintenance program, what we call right-of-way maintenance program, which is primarily mowing. We've got street sweeping, street sweeping program. And then we've got traffic signal maintenance and traffic sign maintenance. Then under personnel, you'll see some increase in personnel. What happened was that Edward allocated people to where they were, were moved to where they should be, so the, the grounds group got smaller by four. And those four used to be called grounds under streets and now they're just called streets. But those people, so that's how we went from four to 12, is the people that were from the grounds department. And there's the personnel listed there and the increase. And then the supplies and others, we have contractual services. That's a mowing contract that's been started recently by a contractor and they're very responsive when we get calls for work that they do. The next one is streetlights. You'll see a decrease in streetlights. Last year, we did a downtown streetlight improvement program and that's not in the budget this year, so that's why that is decreased. And then the street resurfacing funds, and here we're asking for an increase in $700,000, more than we asked for last year, which was $800,000. So in this budget request, we're asking for 1.5 million dollars in, in street resurfacing. And we'll, it makes sense to probably delay some of that into the year. I'm going to talk about a pavement assessment program. Well, actually, the pavement assessment program we've carried forward. We didn't get it done this year, but we will do it early next year, so we'll be able to prioritize those roadways and knock the ones out that make the most sense. And then also, not in this budget, but something we need to work to add in is money for speed bumps, or speed homes in, in this line. So I'll go to the next slide. Supplies and other services, we've got, we increased the budget for street pavement markings. Some of that'll be covered in the pavement assessment. It'll also include some sort of an analysis for the pavement markings that are in need of repair. And then sidewalk and curb repair, we also upped that budget from last year. We do have a, a large backlog of cracked sidewalks and broken sidewalks in our work order system. Okay, we're down to the capital outlay. You see a $287,000 budget increase. So that includes a, a request for a new building that'll serve as a warehouse for the streets crew and it'll also serve as the sign shop, so we could make some of our own traffic signs. And then under equipment, we've got two vehicles that are past their use of life that we're asking to be replaced. And then under miscellaneous equipment, we've got a stump grinder that is, I don't know exactly how old it is, but it's very old and amazing it still runs. And then we also have a variable, variable message board when we need that to alert drivers of activities out in the field. And then down at the bottom, intangibles, you'll see asset management software program on a lot of different lines. We're dividing that up amongst us and that will cover also streets, asset management. And then last one, pavement management software, that goes along with the, with the pavement management program and the software, it's an annual license and it, it's $30,000 the first year to set it up and then there'll be a maintenance fee in subsequent years. Okay, I'll roll to the next slide. That is the inmate program. And again, the term right-of-way maintenance program, that's primarily mowing. And the personnel in that, again, that was another moving people where it made sense. Two of those crews, those inmate crews went to the parks department and two stayed with streets. So that's why there's a reduction in half of the number of personnel. The supplies and, and other services, we've got, again, there's a 50% budget decrease and other decreases because we've lost the people. Oh, sorry. Thank you. Hopefully y'all are following along. Here, I'll click. Down at the bottom, there's equipment. Again, there's, there's two of our inmate vans that are well past their useful service life that need to be replaced. Stormwater management. Okay, the activities and programs that will be managed in this stormwater group is the conveyance, conveyance system maintenance program. That's primarily reactive work. And then the retention system, yeah, the retention system maintenance program, and that is stormwater pond maintenance. Then there's the NPDES MS4 pollution prevention program, which includes the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, NPDES, and the municipal, municipal separate storm sewer system, MS4 programs. And also that will include the street sweeping component. And that's the activities and programs managed. The personnel, right now in the, in the budget, there are zero personnel. The city is currently undergoing a stormwater utility, needs assessment and a rate study. And when that rate study says we need folks in, in this budget line, we'll work through that at that time. And supplies and other contractual services down at the bottom of the slide, we have the contractual services and that's really consultant, consultant designs to help us with the engineering for some of the more complicated problems that need to be designed and permitted here in the city. There's some other minor amounts there with operating supplies and vehicle maintenance. Vehicle maintenance, of course, would decrease with the vehicles that I'm going to ask for, or the vehicle that I'm going to ask for in here someplace. I'll go to the next slide, the capital outlay. You'll see a 1.74 million dollar budget increase there. So in, in infrastructure, stormwater system improvements, that's really the, the mostly reactive thing. That's when stormwater systems are having problems, we need to go in and rehab them. And then the stormwater pipelining, that's more of a preventative maintenance. So when we, when we videotape an inside of a pipe and it's beginning to fail, we can fix it before it fails entirely. The Fran Carlton Center has a stormwater rerouting project that's $100,000 that needs to be done. And then also the stormwater, you need, stormwater utility needs assessment is going to look at the Dream Lake Nutrient Removal Project and the Border Lake Flood Mitigation Projects. Both of these projects, we are, we've been attempting to get grants for those projects and we're going to continue to work towards that goal. There's the, under, under equipment, there's the acquisition of a new vehicle. That's the vehicle I mentioned earlier that would reduce the maintenance cost. We have a stormwater video inspection camera that will allow us to, to inspect the stormwater lines and identify problems before they actually become major problems. A flooding emergency pump, right now we don't have a spare pump. Well, right now, we do have a spare pump. We're pumping Lake Hammer over in Sheeler Oaks because it's high and needs to have a stormwater pump to pump it down. And also, I imagine if we continue to get rain, we'll have a pump set up there in front of Hobby Lobby at 436 in Piedmont-Waikiva, probably the rest of the summer to keep Border Lake down. And then the last one, the miscellaneous operating equipment, that, that would, that's a trailer that would include, that would enclose the, the new stormwater camera mechanism that we have earlier. And then like you'll see several times tonight, there's the asset management program at the bottom for $50,000. And that's my last slide.
Any questions for Richard?
Mayor, we just, I'd like to, I mean, you can, we can ask the question, but I want to clarify in this area because there's some, some issues and some concerns in here, so I guess let me, let, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Mayor, if it's okay. So, and I want to thank Richard because Richard is our stormwater engineer and he has now moved into that role. So he needs, he's, he's been moved down to Public Works with those guys that actually perform this function or who will perform a lot of these functions once the rate study's done. So from the stormwater side, there's, as you know, we, we have a, a company under contract to do a rate, they're doing a now, a rates analysis right now and then on all of our, our future needs of stormwater because that's an area that we have not, that we've been lacking in. And so you'll see that a lot of these things are things that are in that, that are part of that study. And when they finish that study and it comes back to you, you're going to see a lot of these same things in that, in that study and how, they will come back with a, a projection and they will come back with a plan on how do you fund this? How do you, what will it take to fund this? From the personnel all the way down to the infrastructure improvements that you need to make going forward. So that'll, that, from a stormwater side, I wanted you to kind of see where that's at. The street side is where I really want to focus and I want to tell you that. The street side is where I really want to focus and I want to tell you that this budget process, that will be the toughest fund that we're going to have to deal with. There are a lot of needs, a lot of needs. There are a lot of wish list items. There's a lot in the, in the streets fund and unfortunately the streets fund is funded by gas tax and sales tax. Those are the two funding sources and both of them have been hit very, very hard. So unfortunately, um, and we don't have those numbers yet. They're telling us maybe next week. I think it's going to be a little longer because we're trying to determine what those are going to be. So we will, um, we're, once we get those numbers, we'll be actually be able to see kind of what kind of funding we're going to have in this, in this, um, in this fund. I will tell you, we have done a lot of improvements this year, a lot of sidewalks. We spent a lot of money on sidewalks. Um, the resurfacing is getting ready to start. You're getting ready to see those roads that you approved. The resurfacing project's going to start in the next week or so. So you're going to see those roads get done, um, because we had the funding this year for those. And then our plan is to, once we see what kind of revenues we're going to have to, this is the, the opportunity for us to go ahead now and do that pavement management study. Um, so go ahead and get that study, start that study next year so that we have a plan going forward with, um, on a, a resurfacing plan. So we know what we need to pave each year. We know what those costs are going to be, um, and so we'll have that plan to follow. So I think, I think this, so I wanted you to know that. I wanted you to see that. There are a lot of needs here and I, and I will tell you the resurfacing that we've done, that, that you're going to see now where the, where we were getting the most complaints, actually most, almost the majority of the complaints. So as we, once we get those revenue projections in, before we get to the, the September hearing, um, we'll be able to see kind of where we are roughly with this fund. Also, if you recall on this fund, this is where the streetlights for the subdivisions are. Um, we have, um, Mr. Vavrick has come back. He's already started working on those. So going forward, the new ones will now be through assessments and so that will stop, that will help in this fund. Um, it doesn't help the ones that are in there. That's an issue that we'll have to address at another time.
To stop the bleeding.
To stop, but we've stopped the bleeding because we can't keep, we just can't stay at that pace. It's just, we won't have the funding for our resurfacing in our, in our roads. So I think this is very critical year coming up. I think where we, we go through that study, get a study that tells us what roads need to be done and we, so we have a plan in place of what we need to do. We'll have a good year of mowing. This contractor's been very responsive, very, very good. Um, so I think we'll have a plan for, be able to look at that. Maybe there's some potential savings with mowing. Maybe we can outsource a little more of the mowing and have some potential savings that we can redirect somewhere else. But I will tell you, the streets fund is the toughest fund and we're not the only agency. Everybody's facing this with gas tax and sales tax. So, um, it's an area where we'll be, really be looking at it when we bring it to you in September. But I, but I, but I think it's important that you see the needs. It's important that we see the needs and it's important that we have a plan in place going forward, um, through the recovery as we move into the future years because we've never really had that. So what we have made a lot of improvements. We still plan to have money in there to do sidewalks because we still have our sidewalk list and we have, we have several, but we have really, we've really done a lot in sidewalks. Um, and we, um, hope to have, be able to cover a lot of them, the, of course, the mowing and all of that that we have. But it's one of those areas where we're just going to have to really, to look at it very closely and, um, we wanted you to have all the information out there so that you can, you can see what we're dealing with.
Commissioner.
Yeah, you, you touched on some of my key questions as I've gone over this, of course, the six cent tax and, uh, you know, just how will we make up the difference if that is a lack? What I don't want to do and what we can't do is get behind the curve when it comes to, I mean, again, all of the departments, a lot of the equipment is needing to get upgraded. If we push that, kick that can down the road, it is going to hurt us in years to come. So whatever we need to do as a city, you know, anything that is fee-based, usage-based, I, I like looking at it that direction. The people that are actually using it being the ones to help fund it. Um, you know, we want to stay out of taxpayers' pockets as much as we can, uh, but we have to deal with the reality of the whole thing. I, I'm disappointed to see that we're backing off a little on the streetlights. Again, it's about 155,000 or so less, but it's still 1.2 and a half million, I think, that is devoted there. And, uh, so I'm glad that we have, uh, Chuck Vavrick joining us there and keeping a real focus on where we can best put those things. I know this is something that Commissioner Becker has been real concerned about. He'll probably talk on. Uh, one other question, the retention pond, uh, in front of the Hobby Lobby, as you mentioned, we, Piedmont Waikiva, that seems to be a consistent problem. Was that just not engineered back in the day enough? Is there a way to, to fix that in the dry season that, uh, I mean, is that just something we have to live with from now on?
Well, it was designed without an outfall, thinking that the water would just be able to, uh, discharge into the ground. Uh, one of the issues that, or one of the, the opportunities that I'm working with Orange County on is, uh, potentially, uh, reconstructing a drain well right near that intersection that would drain, uh, Lake Ruden and help, uh, Border Lake stay under control. Uh, but permission to put in a new drain well is, is difficult. Right now we're trying to convince DEP of, of the argument that we have enough historical evidence to be able to do that. Uh, so we're in the middle of that right now.
Okay.
Well, what we're trying to do is it's, it should be a partnership between Orange County, Seminole County and Apopka. We, we shouldn't be the only one funding this and I think drainage wells, half a million dollars?
At least, yeah. I, we haven't done one. Orange County's got a lot of experience with them, but...
You know, but so it's a, but, you know, one of the things we're looking at is if, if I have a drainage well, we could also help supplement the water going to Waikiva Springs and to, to Rock Springs. So it's, there's some additional benefits and we, we've been trying to get some funding from the state and, and St. John's and DEP and also DOT because part of the problem is the 436. So anyway, we're trying to get the partnership as this, this one's been a little more difficult than it, than it should be, but Richard's been right on top of it, working hard and I want to thank Richard, you know, we, he, he had his own little, little space up here in community development and we asked him to take on a bigger role here at the city and he stepped right up and, and took the bull by the horns and we appreciate, you know, uh, jumping in there and taking on streets and, you know, stormwater and so, uh, he's, he's done a, he's done a great job.
Commissioner Smith?
Well, I, I'm going to start by applauding you for the great work that you've done on repairing our sidewalks. Uh, I know I've sent in several pitches because I've received complaints and you, you get right on it and so want to know that, that is noticed and the citizens appreciate that. Uh, in reference to the streetlights for the neighborhoods that are already in existence, are we are not going to be able to assess them?
Commissioner, they are currently under contracts. We have contracts with them, written agreements with them that they've signed. So we would have to go back, um, we'd have to go back and meet with each one of them, figure out how we're going to work through that process to, to change that. And so what we're trying to do first is to stop the bleeding. Let's get the new ones that aren't here because those, those citizens have not moved in yet. Still the developer stage. So let's start from that point forward, the assessments. Let's get that under control and then we're going to come back and we're going to have to, we would have to revisit every one of those agreements and contracts that they currently have. So we, that, that would be a, that's going to be a bigger process, but, but, um, if we can stop this part first, then we can go back and, and address that issue as well.
All right. Uh, and I noticed in a couple of the slides that mentioned technology, is that not already included in the technology department budget that was presented on last night?
You're talking about the software?
Yes.
Um, and Richard, I mean...
It was in this budget. Again, I, I didn't get the opportunity to put this budget together, but I assume that it's not since it was included in this budget.
I give you...
He didn't say anything, so I guess.
Here, no, Commissioner, let me kind of clarify that a little bit. So what you'll see across a lot of the budgets this year is there's funding for an asset management system. You see 50,000 usually in, in the budgets. That program will be used by all the departments. We're trying, we're looking for one, we're trying to find one asset management system that works for the whole city. That's our goal. And like Mayor was talking about yesterday, um, we have all these different softwares and we've had a meeting, we've had one meeting, we're going to have other meetings, we're going to have, we're going to put a, a committee or group together where of all the departments that are, so they're all represented so that we can come up with a good software package, management package that will benefit all of us, that everybody can use, that, that everybody's been involved in from up, up front so that it serves their purpose. So what you see is you see funding in each one of those funds so they can pay roughly their share.
Okay.
Hippler has, or Rob, I'm sorry, has the, the, the monies in his budget are the current software. So if we decide to leave some of those programs, we'll have some savings there that maybe we can apply to whatever the new package is. But we wanted to make sure we had funding in, in, um, in, in there so that when we do that project, that, that we have, that everybody's paying their fair share for the software.
All right. And lastly, we want to encourage our citizens to, to buy gas in Apopka so that we can take advantage of that gas tax. Uh, I think that's very important. Uh, I, I drove back from Orlando tonight with two miles left to go because I wanted to buy gas in Apopka.
Thank you. Well, and I will tell you this, if you can't get it in Apopka, make it Orange County.
Make it Orange County.
Because would you, if, if you, Orange County, we get a chunk of it too, so, but if you go to Seminole County, we don't, we don't get any of those.
All right.
Commissioner Becker?
Yeah, so a few questions. Um, and I may be reading into it, and again, my kind of core things that I'm looking at in terms of what we've just discussed is obviously beautification. If we can't do anything else, our city should look beautiful, right? Um, street signs, some other things, street quality, obviously, what we're talking about with repaving. So from a right-of-way, and I may, I may be reading into the comments that you made and Edward said the same comment. So talk me through the responsiveness of our right-of-way vendor. You said they're responsive to calls, but if they're doing the job properly, I wouldn't expect that we're fielding calls. Are, are we getting calls from citizens around the quality of their work?
No, right now they're on their, their second cycle. I got a call actually this morning that I had to let go to voicemail, that, uh, they've, they've stopped the first cycle and they've started the second cycle. And actually it's, it's the city crews that also do mowing that, that say, hey, didn't they know the right-of-way extended further in this area or that area? So I don't think we've gotten, uh, we did have one, uh, citizen complaint on Lester Road where they, there, there's a pond on both sides of the road and, and they didn't go a little further enough on each side. So during this next cycle, they're going to address that. That's the only, uh, concerned citizens we've got. The rest of them have just come from our staff saying...
Yeah, I mean, I haven't personally fielded any yet. I've seen, you know, relatively speaking, it looks like they're keeping up with things. I mean, there, there's a couple cleanup type of issues that they do and maybe a piece of grass around the pole of a, you know, the base of a pole or something like that. Um, but I do notice that from a median landscaping perspective, we've actually dropped that particular budget line. I mean, $10,000 for median upkeep doesn't seem like a, a sufficient amount.
No, it's probably, I will tell you, it's not enough money for that. Um, but like I said, what, what, once we get the revenue numbers for this year, we'll be able to see where we're at because I know speed humps is another item that's not here. But once we get those numbers, we want to try to work that in as well. So what I'm saying is we may have to, we have to give in a couple places if these are some of the other items you want. When we get, when we get, before we get to September, we'll be able to, to give you those actual revenue numbers and then we can, we can justify, we can move around.
Yeah, I mean...
Things we maybe want to put more into that and take a little less in another area.
And I'm by no means an agriculture, um, expert by any means, but you know, people will, will send me stuff about putting ornamental peanut in versus grass to make it stay low for a longer period of time and, you know, blooms and things like that. So, um, also too, the street sign replacement, um, that, that fund is going down as well. Where I, I firmly believe it should stay flat or increase.
Okay.
Um, I've got examples in my own neighborhood where the signs are almost, you know, invisible at this point. I went to a funeral at, at City Cemetery this past weekend, even down by, uh, uh, Kittle Nelson Park, some of the roadways there, I mean, you can't even read the signs. So I, I think we should invest some dollars to make sure that we're keeping those up to date. The, the repaving that we've budgeted, the 1.5 million, how much of that is carryover from this year's budget into next year?
There will be none. And that, so here's, so last year we budgeted 800,000 and we spent 800, we're going to spend 800,000 for the ones that we have. The, the streets department's asking for, they want 1.5. Um, unfortunately, I can, I can tell you, there won't be 1.5 and there won't be any carryover because we're actually doing it, those roads now. So none of that'll carry over. So when we look at the new budget this year, we'll be looking at new dollars, come, the dollars that are coming in and we'll have to, to apply those dollars, um, to those, to those funds. And like I said, I, I wish, I wish I had a little more, better information. By the end of the month, probably the middle of August, we'll know exactly what those revenues are going to be and then we'll be able to kind of prioritize where, where you want to put these, you know, put more towards speed humps, put more towards those items, keep the street signs flat. We can, we can go through those and, and make sure that those are the priority, if those are the wishes and the priorities of the council, we'll make sure those items are funded. Uh, we may have to take away a little bit from resurfacing, but I think that's okay because we've hit those roads that we've had a lot of issues with and that'll also give us time to do our pavement study. We got to get the pavement study done. You can't just keep throwing the roads. We need a pavement study so we have something that you all know and the public knows, this is what we're going to follow.
Yeah, I mean, obviously we prioritize the critical needs because...
Yes.
Most of our residents would come to us and say, you don't need a study to experience running over a pothole, right? I mean, you, you just know what you know. Um, you don't need something on paper to validate.
And let me say real quick, because I've been wanting to say this, uh, I'm thinking about this, um, one of the reasons that the resurfacing's been a little delayed is we had some issues on Vic Road. If any of you drive Vic Road, you will notice that there's a couple places where the road has like, where the, the, the stormwater goes underneath the road, the pipe under the road, you've got these dips and that's where we've got some holes. Well, here's the problem, we, um, we were ready to go on resurfacing, but, um, we got to, when we got Richard down there and we started talking to Richard, it was, uh, the lining that you saw, the stormwater lining, we had, there's, there's problems. Those two li, those two pipes under there are starting to, to wear, have wear and they're starting to collapse. So we kind of, we, we're going to do all the other roads while we, so we can repair those two, um, drainage issues. And that's one of the things we were able to find. We have a current contractor that can do the lining, so he's going to go in and fix that lining so that we can fix that underneath there before we resurface. So that's why there's been a little delay on, on that because Vic Road had some other, some other issues.
Where are you talking, like by Word of Life Church, that area?
Um...
Because...
Yes, when you make the turn, you know, when you turn...
Yeah, because when you're going northbound up across from Word of Life, even when it's dry out, if we've had a lot of rain prior to that, there's still a lot of moisture, uh, in the middle of the street. So that would indicate that there's probably some...
Yeah, I think that's, that's, like, right before Lake Francis, right there, that dip? Yes, that is, that, we had a problem with that stormwater drain there and then one up further from that. If you drive it and you're going north on Vic, you'll hit that. When you make that little turn down in there, you'll hit that little, that little, um, that little depression that's there or whatever. And so we've been getting potholes there that we had to keep filling. So that's why we wanted it when, this is why we had an issue with that. We want to make sure we get that stormwater thing, drainage fixed before we do that. Plus there'll also be a turn lane there, as you know, for that new subdivision. And we want to make sure that we are working together. We don't want to pay ours and then they tear theirs up. We want to make sure that we're all, we're working together to make a smooth transition through there. Because we have a lot of people who, who drive that section.
And then last question, and I know we touched on it a little bit, but just the Border Lake Flood Mitigation System, talk me through that again. What, what's the scope of that work? Is it finalized or is it not? Are we, do, because in, in the, in the packet, it talks, talks about 50% funding, right? Is that, is, is that in-flight or is that a wish list item as well?
That, that's a wish list item and we just, we really, the, the key thing is, is getting DEP to buy in on the fact that they would, uh, they may let us re-drill a drainage well. And if they don't, uh, there's some other, uh, potential solutions that we haven't, uh, spent additional resources on because the, the drainage well is right there at that intersection and that would be the, the best long-term cheapest solution, uh, that, uh, that we can come up with that would solve those problems.
Because there's some, a neat benefit to us though, right? I mean, in, in the, in the packet sheet, it talks about rerouting to our reclaimed water facility, right? Is that what the intent would be?
That's one of the other ideas. Uh, they both, both rerouting to the reclaimed water facility and the drainage well will both have the impact of, of, of recharging the, uh, Wakava Springs and, and Rock Springs Run. And so, so from a grant perspective, they both have that benefit. Uh, but those, that is the second best alternative that we have in that area. But the drainage well, Orange County feels strongly that, uh, it, it's worth the time to try to convince, uh, DEP to do that project because it would be much more cost-effective than rerouting the water into our reclaim system.
We've had, we've had like three meetings with Orange County, Seminole County and DOT to try to come up with a plan we can all buy into. Cause we, we're 40% of the problem, but we're, we're not getting any, any real help from the, the rest of the, the interested parties. And so it's like, so why should we drop a half a million dollars when it's not all of our problem? Cause Border Lake is half in Seminole, half in Lake. Then you got Orange County, see the neighborhoods that are on the, the, the north side of 436 that flooded out, you know, during Irma. That's Orange County's problem. So it, it, you know, it, it needs to be a, a community effort here to, 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 to solve that problem. And so we're just trying to figure out how to, what's the best way to do it. And, and we need partners to help step up, including St. John's and DEP to help us solve it.
But if, and again, I'm limited information, but do we not have the ability to monetize that if it went into our system? I mean, if we took, if we took water out of Border Lake and put it into our system and we charge people for that reclaimed water, I mean, we get a revenue benefit out of that, right? I mean, am I thinking about this the wrong way?
Yes, cause it's, you have to go, it has to go stormwater first, then you'd have to clean it to reclaimed water to put it in the reclaim system. So that, cause that's one of the things, we, we got another, we'll just, I got another thought that we're, we're working on that might give us an option, but, but at this point, we're not there yet. But yeah, it's, you probably, yeah, we, you can't mix stormwater and reclaimed water. You have to, you have to clean stormwater to the reclaimed water, um, standards before you can put it into the system.
Oh, no. Yeah, yeah. I mean, without a doubt. So there's, there's cost to that, right?
Yes.
And does the revenue that we would stand to get from that same water outpace the costs? I mean, is there a margin there that we would stand to get? If not, the, the answer could be no. But if the answer is yes, is it a large enough margin where, you know, you look at a cost like that and it doesn't scare you if ultimately you're going to get some revenue and benefit out of it. So at the same time, doing something positive for Border Lake as well.
Yeah. So I, I, we're looking at all the options.
Yeah. I mean, if you've already done the feasibility, that's one thing. I mean, if you could just share that, that would be helpful. I mean, if, if we're going to go forward with this expansion.
Let me ask, uh, when you mentioned deterioration of the, uh, drainage pipe, is that the same problem we have on, uh, Hawthorne? I, I noticed, I guess last week they filled it in with some asphalt, but where that dip is, is that the same problem there?
Yeah, we had fixed that previously. Actually on Hawthorne, on, on, at some point, someone tried to fix the problem with putting, uh, concrete underneath the asphalt on half the road. And when we, when we lined that pipe, we had thought that would take care of the problem. But apparently underneath the concrete, there was a void that, uh, that collapsed the other side of the road that doesn't have the concrete on it. So, uh, we fixed that problem now. And I believe that project is on the repaving list. So I'm glad we got to that ahead of, uh, that repaving.
Okay. And then my last question is, uh, in reference to the, uh, stormwater system, I, I know there are private landscaping companies that are blowing trash into the stormwater system. Is there any way we can find them for, for doing this?
Yes, the, the, uh, the stormwater utility, uh, program evaluation and the rate study is also going to include recommendations. And I had on the list, the, uh, NPDES and MS4 programs. And, uh, and that's actually a requirement of those programs. And we, 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 we don't yet have enough staff to, to go out and, uh, and go through the process of, uh, of code enforcement and enforcement against those folks. But if we got two or three additional folks involved, then we would have staff that could do that sort of thing exclusively, or at least, uh, much more than we're doing it now.
Okay.
Okay, good. Thank you, Richard. Appreciate it. Edward, you up?
All right. So, um, facilities. So on the facilities side, as you know, we have, um, 35 buildings, structures, buildings that we maintain. Um, we have a maintenance program that, um, you know, we have work order system and a maintenance program that, that we, um, work through, that we try to follow. Um, in this, but in this budget or this cost center, we have two full-time employees that work in our facilities, that, that take care of the facilities, um, the city facilities. Keep in mind, this is just city facilities. Um, their professional services budget, you can see, and I apologize, the, the writing looked good when we were reviewing the slides, but I can't read it myself.
Sun, suns.
So, um.
That red text on the blue background.
Yeah, I, yeah. So it looked great in the, in the office. So, um, professional services, um, you see that there's a, um, a little bit of an increase. There's $20,000 increase there. Um, this is due to, we have some air conditioning problems in some of our buildings where the balance is not right. There's some of the buildings cold in some areas, it's hot, hot in some other areas. We've built some structures or whatever. And so we put some, there's some funding in here to kind of rebalance, to make sure we have the air conditioning right in these, in the buildings. As you know, we have some older buildings and they haven't ever been, been, there hasn't been much done to them. The utility services, you see a big crease here, $125,000. Last year's budget, we, we did not have our utility bills included in our budget. We, um, we've been monitoring the overall budget to make sure that we don't, you know, that, that if we have to come back to you for a budget amendment, we will. But right now, we're holding our own. We're able to, to squeak along. If, if we get where we can't, then we'll come back to see you. But we should be okay to finish the year out. But we didn't have that number in there. So this year, you'll see that 125,000, that covers all the utility bills, all the electric, gas bills for the public buildings. Um, the repair and maintenance, you see a, a decrease there. Um, we've done some things. We've done a lot of things in some areas where we, um, have been able to reduce a little bit here. It's a little bit of savings here. Kind of will help with, maybe you can use some of these savings to help with the rebalancing of the air conditioning. Um, I will tell you too, that we're also trying to hopefully, we, we're going to put the chiller bid back out to replace the chiller in the city hall. We've been, you know, limping along with it. Um, and it's knock on wood, it's been good, but we're going to try to see if we can't get the rebalancing put into that. Um, we didn't have, we didn't get much response. So hopefully we'll get some better response this year on that. And we'll try to maybe work some of the rebalancing of the AC into that and maybe have some savings, some savings in this item too. Um, contractual services, you see that that item's up quite a bit. This, there's some things in here that are, they're, they're not on the wishlist, but I think they are going to end up being wishlist items because you've got, um, we've been looking at different vendors for our, our fire sprinkler systems, our security system to try to see if we can, can do a, get a better deal. So, um, we've got some, some maintenance things that we're not, we weren't doing in some of our buildings. So you've got some additional dollars in here to be able to do those kinds of things in some of our buildings. Some of our buildings have security, some of them don't. We want to be able to, and again, I, I don't, I'm not sure this, that we'll be able to do all of this, but, um, but this is one of the items that was put in this budget, um, to kind of cover those costs. Um, and so if you go over to capital, you've got about $49,000 increase in your capital outlay, um, from last year. The, um, a lot, some of that is, um, you'll see that there's, um, what did I have in that one? I'm lost. Why am I lost? Have to get my notes. Um, I'm sorry. I'm looking for the overall. So that's an increase from the prior year to the current year. So what you see is in buildings, whoops, we have, make sure I have this right. So we have, as you know, we've got the new ADA compliant push button that we put in city hall. We've, um, we're going to put some more funding in to be able to do signs and push plates for some of our other buildings to get them to where they have the actual, um, ADA push button in those buildings. These items that you see here that are roof replacements, if you recall, this flooring and roof replacement was in the current budget that we're in now. Um, staff has, has put it into this upcoming budget. As I told you, what we're doing is we're kind of watching to see where we are this year, to see how we end this current fiscal year that we're, that we're in. These are some of the items we're holding back right now because of the sales tax, um, the number that we've been hit with the sales tax. And so these are items that we're hoping we can, as we get to the end of this fiscal year, if we've, if we've got some savings or some extra funding or whatever, that we can go ahead and take care of these items now. And we won't have to have those included in the next year's budget. You have the maintenance on the museum. As you know, the museum, we need to do some, some maintenance on the museum. Some of the wood on that is, has started to deteriorate. So whatever, so we need to, we have some funding in there for that. And then what we've been on this program for AC replacement, because we've had some, we haven't really ever done a really good job at, at going through our ACs. So as you know, the last couple of years, we've had several AC replacements. This is putting some money in to replace some of the other ones. So soon we'll have all of those on a, on a schedule. And then again, you see the software in here, the 50,000. Again, that's the asset management software I was telling you about. Each facilities will be a person that will you, this will be a big piece of this, for them. The software will be huge for them from their work program to their, to their building management. So that's why you see some, some funding in there as well. So you see an overall 34% budget increase. Keep in mind that, that budget, that it's, it's significant because you have the roofs in this year's, in the 20, we're putting the roof in the projected budget or the proposed budget, but the roof was already in the current budget. So if for some reason we haven't, can't get it through this current one, you, they're, they're putting it in for the next year. But like I said, we'll, we're watching all the numbers really close and, and hopefully we can come back and we can do some of these now, as, as we had planned in the current year and not have to, to roll them into the next year. So administration, so now, so that, so that covers all of our public works items. Now we'll go to the utility side of the house. And this is the administration side, which is the director's section of the, of the utilities, or the cost center. So as you know, and they have all the daily operations, management of the daily operations, the procurement side, the budget. Um, this is where customer service, all the phone calls come into the administrative group, work orders, is where the work orders are initiated when people call in and have work orders. Um, the purchasing and operations supplies and equipment, the inventory people that keep our fleet inventory and our, um, fleet is covered in fleet, I'm sorry. This, this, um, is the, the utility inventory control person. Um, and then the warehouse management where they warehouse, they hold all of our inventory. You can see that last year, we had nine full-time employees. You can see that there's six in the current year. What we've, we have, you have three that do administrative management. You have two that do support. And then you have the one I just talked about, the purchasing and inventory program manager. What you will see as you move through the, if we move through these budgets and the other divisions, we've repurposed some of these positions. So we've taken some positions from some places that, that, um, for example, I'll tell you, there was an administrative position here that we were able to repurpose because one of the other divisions had a compliance issue or, or needed somebody, um, to help with, um, one of our compliance issues or whatever. So we were able to repurpose some of those positions, still being, these, this department, or this division still being able to perform their function. So we didn't take any of the function away and they, they're good in this area. But you'll see as you move through that we've repurposed some of these to actually help with some of the actual compliance, to put some positions where we need some compliance. So on professional services, you'll see that there was 100% decrease. The rate study was funded out of this line that we're currently in. So there won't be a rate study. So that, that's funded in this year. Um, the cleaning, this, this budget's up. The next few, the cleaning, repair and maintenance and the office supplies and utility services, you'll see a significant increase here. You're going to see a significant decrease in those lines in the other divisions. What we've done is in order to manage this better, we've put it into the administration budget so they can manage the office supplies for the, for the whole group. That, you know, cause we, there's more, there's efficiencies if we've got it in one area, one place. Um, repair and maintenance on the buildings and stuff, it's easier just to have it in one budget rather than to put it amongst all the divisions so that someone that can monitor that and manage those costs and manager, manage those items. The utility bills, we've put them all in the administration budget so that, that the, um, the electric bills and stuff on the administration building is in one area so that we can, we can monitor it and, and be able to look at those costs going forward. The cleaning of the building, it was spread over all the divisions, but it's one fund. So it does, so we've put it in the administration as well so that it can be, it's, it's easier to manage. It, it was just very tough when you have, you know, a portion spread out in all the divisions. Now, if you cross funds, it's different. So you'll see in your general fund that they're paying their portion of the, of the repair and maintenance. But because this is all one fund, we put it in the administration so they can manage it better. Capital outlay, you see there's a $53,000 increase from the prior year. Again, you see the roof replacement for the administration building, that's in the current year. Um, it's one of those items we've kind of held back a little bit on, kind of waiting to see where we end this fiscal year, um, with everything that we've been hit with. But I will, um, tell you that this is, this is the root, this is one of those items we're going to come back to you as well as we get closer into the fiscal year and say, this is where we are, this is what we want to do. And then if, if we can do it in this current year, then we won't have to roll it over into the next year. The copier, scanner, machine, printer, they need a new one. Again, as we talked about earlier, Rob's looking through if it's better for us to lease or purchase those or maybe buy out the one that we have, if it's going to last for several years, that we can still get some, some use out of that. So that's one of the items we'll be looking at before we get to September too, in the final budget, to see if there's any possible savings. And then the asset management software, you see it here too. So in this, this budget, you see their portion, um, for the utility side. So that's the administration side. If you have any questions there, um, I can answer any of those. And then, so Vladimir will do the design engineering.
Good afternoon, everyone. Mayor Commissioner Vladimir Smonovski, I'm the Design Engineering Division Manager. Uh, gonna go over our budget for the fiscal year 2021. Uh, design engineering is funded through the enterprise fund. It's budget line 3410. And as part of the public services department, the design engineering division focuses primarily on planning and engineering of the.
Speak up for us, Vlad, a little louder, please.
I'm sorry. All right. Okay. Is it better?
There you go.
Okay. Sorry about that. As part of the public services department, the design engineering division focuses primarily on planning and engineering of the city utilities, but also provides professional assistance to other departments such as the community development and parks and recreation, and plays an instrumental role in various grants-funded projects. So design engineering currently manages three programs. That's a planning and engineering program, which consists of the utility capital improvement plan, program or plan, utilities rehabilitation replacement program, and utilities development review. Also construction management program, which consists of the project management and a construction inspection. And the asset management program ultimately that we're all talking about, uh, this evening, uh, that includes the geographic information system or the GS administration, and also the utilities and public works asset management, uh, for the entire department. So, uh, design engineering currently employs seven full-time employees. Two new positions will be added in the fiscal year 2021 budget. Uh, that's a construction project coordinator and construction inspector. These two new positions will be part of the construction management program, which currently consists of only one construction inspector. No changes will be made in the total number of the department employees. Uh, one position is being transferred or utilized from the administration budget and the other one's coming from the water operations resources. The nine full-time employees will be divided into three groups. Again, the planning and engineering program, that's four full-time employees. We have two professional engineers, myself and another professional engineer. Uh, we have three full-time employees in the construction management program, which we're lacking some help there. And we're going to have, as we have right now, the two full-time employees with the asset management program. Sorry. That will create about 28.6% of budget increase, uh, under the personnel line, which is, uh, uh, between 1, 122610. Uh, we have another 12% budget decrease in the supplies and other services. We have, uh, about 62% budget decrease in the operations supplies, but we have some increases in the fuel and gasoline and training primarily due to the two new positions, the two new field positions. Uh, the cap, going to the capital outlay, we have about $156,000 budget increase here, uh, mainly in the equipment. We need to acquire three new vehicles, Ford F-150 CNG. That's one new vehicle is for the construction project coordinator and two new vehicles for the construction inspector. Now we'll see as we come to closer to September, uh, we'll see how the revenue goes. Uh, we'll have more information on that. We'll see, we can maybe utilize some of the, um, other vehicles that, uh, other divisions will be replacing. So maybe find a temporary solution and maybe we'll move something to next year. So we'll see how that goes. Uh, on the intangible assets, um, we have three line items here. We have the Innovize Info Water. That's a annual license subscription. That's one license subscription for $11,000. Uh, the Info Water, we need that software application in order to be able to manage our water and wastewater model, as well as to update the utility master plan. Uh, we also included Innovize Info Asset Planner, which is another annual license subscription for $16,000. Uh, this software application will assist with the utilities capital improvement program. And we have a RainCAD two lifetime licenses for $2,800, uh, to assist with the design of irrigation systems. So overall budget line 3410 for design engineering, we have about 7.7% budget increase.
Any questions for Vlad?
Do you have any questions?
Why do we track the software license under this versus IT?
Different fund. They have their own licenses.
Uh, cause it's enterprise?
Enterprise fund, yeah.
So we, we have a few others, but they're less than $1,000. So they, they're not listed here that we have to do like AutoCAD. We have three licenses for Civil 3D and two licenses for the AutoCAD Lite version, but they're typically below $1,000. So they go into.
And that's not one user license? That's one annual license for the subscription use and multi-user?
For those, without AutoCAD, yes. These Innovize Info Water, they're more specific with planning and asset management. So they typically issue one license for the entire organization, for example, of our size. That's why the price is a little bit higher because they go by how many models you can do.
Yeah. If it was a per user, I was going to say that's pretty high, but if it's just used for the system, okay.
Correct.
Good. Okay. Thanks, Vlad. Appreciate it.
I do want to say one thing real clear, um, clear there too. Um, when you talk about software, we were talking about software, those pieces, there are a portion that are in, there's a portion that's in IT. For example, the Microsoft, everybody across the city uses Microsoft. Um, Rob pays for all that out of his, but the transfer, which we're having studied now, transfers that. It's just certain specific pieces that, that engineering uses, they maintain in there through their budget. through their budget.
All right, let's go Glen, Water Resource.
Good evening Commissioners, Mayor Glen Brooks, Water Resource Operations Manager. I'm presenting three different budgets here, so. First, we're going to start with the water plants, budget line 3111. Facilities operated, operate five of water treatment plants. Activities and programs managed, distribution of potable drinking water, water quality program, and the water conservation program. Personnel, we have a 6% budget increase. There's no increase in personnel. We have seven full-time positions with five licensed operators and two employees for our water conservation program as required by our cut permit. Again, like I say, even though we didn't add new positions, we do have an increase of 6%. This is mainly due to the increase in regular salaries and wages, and we've encouraged some of our operators to achieve a higher license, and they've done that throughout the year. So, we're excited about that and putting them in a higher payer band, pay band. Supplies and other services, there's a 6% budget decrease. Utility service is down 2%, though that's minimal. That's mainly due to a drop in fuel costs. Operating supplies are down 3.7%. And again, we've just been able to tighten up our belts there a little on that, a minimal cut, but about $6,000 that we were able to do. Water conservation budget is down 60%. I know that's a big number, so this is due to the funds that we allotted to this, the past two years to this position, is just simply not being used for the incentive rebate program that the city offers to, to residents for retrofitting of their irrigation systems. I think we can do maybe a better job of maybe outreach and stuff and let them know that is available, because this past year we only had four residents that took advantage of that, so. So, with that, we, we've cut the budget back and, so that's why you see the, see the drop there. Again, this program is required by part of the St. John's Cut Permit, and so it, it is needed, we have to have it. Capital infrastructure. We had a budget increase, hold your breath, $2.325 million. This budget increase is mainly due to the replacement of three of the upper Florida aqua wells at the Plymouth Regional Water Plant with one lower Florida, Florida aqua well. And again, this is required by our St. John's River Water Management District Cut Permit, and it's at a cost of $1.25 million. The same is required for the Groson-Bacher Water Treatment Plant. The reason you see a 0.75, if we moved it, is Rob, okay, that's current. You see that number there, the 0.75? That is due, it's the same price as the other well, that is because we had a carryover from last year, $500,000, it's carried over. These are large projects and it takes over two years to, to be complete, and, and with that number up there, we plan on, you know, that'll be into next year's budget also. So, that's why we carried it from last year, you see that. We do have some design work that will be done with Plymouth Regional and Sheila Oaks Water Treatment Plants at a cost of $285,000. We also have $40,000 that has been budgeted for the sealing and painting of the Mount Plymouth Lakes Water Treatment Plant Ground Storage Tank. It's over in a residential area and we had some people lay about it and it needs to be sealed and painted and stuff. Capital outlay equipment. We budgeted $43,000 for the replacement of one of our trucks, the water department, water plant department, due to wear and age. The truck is over 16 years old and it's out in the public. These guys run around from plant to plant with these trucks, and this truck is, is in need of, of replacement, so that's why we budgeted that money there. With that, any questions we have on the water plant?
Questions on the water plant?
Just if, are those in or the wish list? I just want to ask because.
When you, when you're talking on the.
I just want to know which ones we're actually trying to fund versus which ones we need to consider about adding to, right?
There, these, this is a, this is kind of a wish list, the wells, we're going to have to fund one or two of them, we're going to have to fund them somehow, but what we're looking at, we're looking at funding them over a two-year period or a three-year period. So this is what, what needs to be done, and this is the cost of doing them upfront, but we're going to budget it in like a two-year period. So you'll see the total cost here, but when the budgets come in September, you'll see a half of it in one year and half of it in the next year.
Okay, but every, so am I, am I to assume that stuff that's on this packet that we're highlighting is stuff that you all are trying to solve or when we have the final budget presented to us?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Any questions, Commissioner Smith? Good. Okay, good, all right.
Next, we'll move to the wastewater plant, the water recommendation facility, budget Facilities operated, we have one wastewater treatment plant and three reclaimed water treatment plant pumping stations. Activities and programs managed, treatment of domestic wastewater, distribution of reclaimed water, environmental compliance program, industrial pretreatment program, and fats, oil and grease fog program. We have no personnel increase. Again, we do have a 6.3% budget increase, and again, that's due to the salaries and wages. The same thing, we have the water plant, we encourage our operators to, to hire license, and they took advantage of that throughout the year. So, again, there's 16 full-time positions, we have 13 wastewater treatment plant and reclaimed water distribution licensed operators. This includes the chief and the water resources operations manager. Let me stop there for a moment. As you are aware, we just completed early this year the wastewater plant expansion. And one of the requirements of our FDP operating permit was that during construction, we had to be staffed 24 hours per day. Once construction was completed, we went from a 4.5 million gallon a day conventional plant to an 8 million gallon a day biological, biological nutrient removal plant. The requirement from FDEP is that any wastewater plant designed for over 5 million gallons a day has to have a Class C operator or higher on site 24 hours per day, seven days a week. When we built our wastewater plant, we first built the new plant in the East Field. And the old existing plant, we, we rehabbed later. The East Plant is rated at 5 million gallons a day, and the West Plant is rated at 3 million gallons a day. Keep in mind, the threshold to go to 24-hour staff is a plant designed for over 5 million gallons a day. So we looked at our influent flows and found that our incoming flows have not fluctuated much, and we're about 3.2 million gallons per day that we're treating. So we reached out to FDEP and requested that based on the demand that we have and not needing to run both plants, that we shut down the West Plant until the time the demand is over the threshold of 5 million that we need to use it. They granted us that, then in February of this year, we put in for a permit revision to remove our staffing requirement from 24 hours a day to 16 hours per day. Then in March, FDEP approved our staffing reduction permit modifying to go to 16 hours a day staffing. This in return created two operator positions that we were able to use in areas that we were deficient in. This includes one position that you're seeing here, is for the environmental specialist program, compliance program, we have an environment, we want to hire a person for that, and we're able to do that, and also for the fog program, fats, oil and grease. So we were able to keep, we were able to fill two key positions that are required by our operating permit, and we did not have to add any positions to do this. So, we're proud of that, and I just wanted that known. Supplies and services. There's a 9.1% budget decrease overall. Utility services is down 2.5%. Operating, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, 12.5%. And operating supplies are down 12%. Again, this is mainly due to the shutting down of the West Plant. Contractual services is up 212%. You say, whoa, wait a minute, what's going on here? For roughly $23,000. And again, let me explain why. Earlier this year, we did a cost of what the city pays for a certified in-house lab. The overall cost to maintain our certified, certified lab is north of $220,000, with $127,000 of that money being allocated to personnel. We looked at what other municipalities are doing, and most our size have outsourced their lab. Some include Deltona, Volusia, Seminole, Longwood, Castleberry, Winter Springs. When we looked and did our cost analysis, we realized that moving forward, the city would be better from a transparency standpoint and from a cost standpoint to move forward with outsourcing our lab. With outsourcing, we can use these two positions for overall maintenance of all the FDP regulated spray fields that we have, the water plants that need to be maintained, emote, and taken care of, and, and, and still have a cost savings. Miscellaneous charge we see is up, sludge hauling is slightly up, there's an increase there in the sludge hauling. Capital outlay, you see that $105,000 budget increase? $50,000 we did budget for the painting of the, we did have some of the wastewater reuse storage tanks painted. We have one that's, we haven't yet, and we'd like to get that one done. There is a cost difference between doing those because they're larger tanks, so when you see the $40,000 for the water plant, they're like $500,000, or reuse tanks is $2 million to 1 million gallon storage tank, so there is a cost difference there. The $53,800 is for the LIM software. I want to repeat, that will go away with the outsourcing of the lab, we won't have that cost, so. And I do think that there was, we, we put that down twice, didn't we, on the LIM system on there, Vlad?
Yes.
So, one's going to come off there.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. In our overall budget line increase, 0.5%, I'm sorry, 0.5% budget decrease. That's it on the wastewater side. Any questions?
Any questions?
A couple. When, when do we anticipate having to restart the West Plant? Is there a benchmark number of homes or businesses, or is there a timeframe that we think?
Yeah, Commissioner Banks, that's, that's really based on our flows, and I'll tell you what, we have not seen, if we go back six, eight years, our, our flows has been, five years ago was 2.8 million. We're roughly around 3.2 now. I know that building is, you know, is taking off on the north side, but to have that crystal ball and know when that's going to happen, I don't know, but the threshold to kick that in is if, if you're at, at, you know, 60-some percent capacity, or, or I'm sorry, 70% capacity, you need to have a contingency plan in place. We do have it, we have the West Plant. Would we put it online then? I think we'd make a judgment call. If, if the East Plant was still meeting, you know, the requirements, we probably wouldn't from a cost standpoint. Once we're not meeting those requirements and we get to a certain threshold, we would put the West Plant on, but to, to know when that would be, I, I wish I had, but I mean, we can trend and look, but no one can predict for sure what. We don't know the market's going to crash in two years, I mean, it's just an unknown.
You're, you're saying basically in five years, we've gone from 2.8 to 3.2?
Yes, sir.
So we can extrapolate that out on more of a, you know, it, it's an exponential growth probably, so we, we need to be looking in that.
Absolutely, and keep in mind, where we was at five, you know, the economy was just starting to come back and also where we are today, we're, we're in better.
Usage is usage, whether we've got a good economy, so we do have contingency plan, it's just, we'll know we'll have some increased expense when we have to do that.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Smith?
I'm good.
Commissioner Bank?
Yeah, the only question I would have is, and I'm sure you all are on top of this, it's just going into an outsourced environment for our lab. I'm assuming the contractual language has indemnification or making sure that if anything happens that would potentially put at risk our water supplier, stuff like that, there's, we're heavily covered there, correct?
Yes, sir, we are, and that's what other municipalities do. And again, Commissioner Becker, one of the things that we know, we've all heard, you know, people are going to say what they're going to say, well, they run, they got their own lab down there, they're cooking the books to do, you know, people's going to say those kind of things. But from a transparency standpoint, we're much better, and from a cost standpoint, and it does put the responsibility on the outs, the outsourced, who you're using for them on that. We gather, we do chain of custody and supply, once we do, and, and we're able to, you know, they'll send us in, you know, the results, all that, we'll, we'll be able to get a quick turnaround on that, and they're our backup for it, you know, anytime we have to extract data for some reason, or, or DPD comes and say, hey, we want to see it, well, you know, they're available to.
That's a good question, I wasn't even thinking about that. So, would they do all of our annual water testing and stuff like that as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And Commissioner, let me say this too, we will continue to keep, we're going to keep all the assets and equipment that we have in the lab, so we're not selling off any of that or getting any rid of any of that in case we decided one day we wanted to bring it back in-house for some reason. I don't anticipate that because it works very well outsourced, but if we ever did, then we could, we could do that. Plus, we can still do tests in-house, right?
Absolutely.
So we can still do, if we wanted to do an emergencies, if we wanted to do a test, we still have all the equipment and the personnel will still be able to do that, that if they needed to.
And we'll, we'll be taking full advantage of, of the lab that we do have, you know, far as for, one of the things we've done in the plant expansion, when I come in, we were just looking at that, maybe of outsourcing, so we do have a little small lab, but we want to use that for our operators to be efficient every day and use it for, for other staff to be in there and to run charge tests and daily samples in there. So it's going to be really helpful for operators to be proactive on the plant operations and using it to, to our strength.
Okay.
And that's it on wastewater. Next will be utilities plant maintenance, budget line number 3191. Facilities, facilities operated, maintained, activities and programs managed. We have five, again, water treatment plants, one wastewater treatment plant, three reclaimed water treatment plants. Activities and programs managed, preventative and corrective utility plant maintenance. We also, the computerized maintenance and management system, CMMS, and the SCADA system, supervised control and data acquisition. It's really helpful, really helpful. We have 11.1% budget decrease, and let me, let me kind of explain that for a moment. Last year, we moved four employees from 3191 back to 3171, where we felt better suited. This was for the lift stations collections group. So we went from 11 down to seven employees at the time, and we were more efficient that way because for, for plant operations and, or, I'm sorry, for the, for the maintenance of the plant, so we have, so we did move those four positions over, and they've done a better job being under Jorge and that division. So, we have a decrease, like I say, in personnel, if you look from 11 to nine, you say, well, wait a minute, Glen, you told me four moved. Well, I will explain. Those positions that we were talking about in the lab that we said would go away. Those positions that we were talking about in the lab that we said would go away, this is where we wanted to move those two positions to. So the full-time employees we have is one maintenance supervisor, two electricians, two instrumentation technicians, and two utility plant mechanics, and two maintenance workers. Supplies and Other Services is increased 12.2%. The increase is due to the five-year maintenance and repair of the plant reuse well, including rehab of the well pump and the well hole at a cost of $50,000. And also Northwest Water Treatment Plant, High Service Pump Number Two, the five-year maintenance and rehab of it at a cost of $20,000. Capital Outlay. It's an increase of $155,000. This is for equipment for staff to do their job and be efficient at it. Right now, staff share zero-turn mowers with other departments and during the growing season, this makes it a challenge to keep up. I want to re, just reiterate this with you guys. It is so important that we keep our plants maintained, emode, and presentable. Not only is aesthetics is it, is it important, but from FDP standpoint, if we did not maintain those spray fields and keep them in a certain hut, it is a fine, they could come to us and it's a regulatory compliance issue. We cannot have grass growing like sometimes we see in other places. So it's very important, that's why we're excited about moving these people over in this position to be proactive in getting this taken care of, but it is gonna require some investment from us in some equipment to get the job done, to be efficient. And like I say, that'd be for the zero-turn mower. And we also need to replace our Massey tractor that we have. It's over 35 years old and it's, it's always in, it's shop in the fleet and down, so, uh, and the tractor is used to operate our bat wing mower for maintenance of those spray fields, again, that I say is required by the Department of Environmental Protection. Intangible Assets, we put 50,000, as the other departments did, to their Asset Management Program Software that Edward was speaking about. Overall Budget Line 3191, there's an 8.8% budget increase. And that's, that's all I have on, on, on that one, so that will questions.
Any questions?
Good?
Oh, this is just a, it's a range of emotions with you Glenn, I mean, you take us up and you talk us down, this is just...
I know, I know. Trying.
All right.
That's it. Thank you.
Utilities Maintenance. George.
Good afternoon, here's Jorge Garcia, Utility Maintenance Manager. That's gonna be hard to top, mine's gonna be more monotone.
He gets excited.
I'm gonna go over, uh, Utility Maintenance and, uh, Wastewater Maintenance Budgets. First will be 3141. Activities and Programs Managed, Water Maintenance Replace, Water Meters Replacements, uh, Replacement Program, uh, Water Meters Connection/Disconnection Program, Cross Connection/Backflow Preventive Program, Hydrant Maintenance Program, uh, Valve Maintenance Programs. Utility Connections and Repairs, make sure our customers, um, if they ever have a break, we gotta be able to make sure that their water restored. Uh, Utility Locates Program, and we're also now doing our own restorations. Uh, we moved, uh, uh, our Restoration Department went away, so now, uh, whatever we go out there and repair, we also gotta go back and restore, or whatever we damaged. Uh, with Personnel, we do have an increase, um, we got rid of 3131, which is our Construction Division, you know, we're gonna be, uh, looking to outsourcing on new utility pipelines. By doing this, it's gonna enable us to focus on the assets that we have and have better preventive maintenance on them, or do better preventive maintenance on them. So we went from 15, uh, full-time employees to now 21, so now they're repurposed and we're still trying to manage on where they're best needed on the Utility Maintenance Group. Uh, right now, we have, uh, 10, uh, that are focused is Water Meters, Backflow, Cross Connection, and Utility Locates, uh, with one Utility Foreman, uh, on that group. Uh, second group is more of the repairs and, uh, the bigger maintenance, which is hydrants, valves, um, they do a lot of the water leaks, the main water leaks, and so that's their focus and, uh, with one Utility Foreman. Uh, again, we're making sure we're staying in compliance and, you know, doing the shift is gonna allow us to better focus on our Cross Connection Control Program and making sure that we're doing everything that we are required to do by DEP. Supplies and Other Services, our budget increased by 3.5%. Our Census Metering, uh, Budget decreased, but, uh, we increased, uh, our Backflow Operational Supplies Budget. And that's due to, we need to get a better hold on the way we're managing and we're looking into our, all the approved, uh, Devices and making sure we got the correct device on all the residential properties that require one. Uh, we're also working on updating our Cross Connection Control Program Manual, so that's something that we'll be doing. And we'll also be doing a rate study on that to make sure we, for this program, we're getting revenue from, uh, so that's something that we're looking into. Our Capital Outlay increased by 540,000. Uh, that's, we put some money in there to be able to start the replacement and renewal of our old, uh, uh, water lines, infrastructure, which concludes asbestos, they become brittle, and we put together, uh, a plan and, and most, or we did an analysis and kinda laid it out on how long it's gonna take to replace the amount that we have out in the system and we feel like 540 would be a good start to get that program going. And you see that, uh, below infrastructure, we have 100,000 that we always carry over, 400, oh, sorry, 450 is the actual one that was gonna be put into specifically to this program and 100,000 is one that we tried to do this, some of the areas, but I, I don't think we were doing nearly enough to, you know, reduce the, the water leaks, so, um, you know, with water leaks, you got water loss and, you know, that's revenue that you were losing there, so. In Equipment, we got a acquisition of two new vehicles. These, uh, we actually didn't purchase them this year, we, uh, put them in there again for next year, that's, this is gonna be, vehicles are gonna be used on this, uh, Cross Connection Program and also our Census Metering, uh, we feel like we're going away from, uh, Rangers, it's limited space on them, the more, uh, meters, boxes that we carry, the less time guys are spending going back to restock their truck. So that's reason for that. I got some money in there also for, uh, Automatic Flushers. Um, this will be looked into installing on some of these dead-end, uh, lines where quality becomes an issue and we don't have to manually do them, we can, um, install these automatic flushers and have a, they can be metered and you can monitor as they're being, or as they come on. Uh, we also have money in there for our Asset Management Program and that was, for us, it's a big benefit. It, um, it allows us to plan better on our budget, uh, it, uh, it let us know where the areas are that we've been getting the most work orders, the most repaired, where we have done the most repairs and where our focus needs to be going forward. So, uh, we do have an increase of, overall of 31.3%. So, any questions on 3141?
Questions?
Uh, just a few. One of the things I was gonna talk about earlier, and I'm glad it's on here, so the hydrant, uh, Maintenance Program is, would that include painting as well?
Yes, that's included. We currently have two guys and we have, uh, 18 or 1,893 hydrants and, and the whole purpose of repurposing this guys is to make sure that we get a better handle and put, uh, get a better system in place where we actually going out and, and doing all of that. Right now, as they come to a hydrant, they do a complete, uh, rehab, which is they break it down, all the way down to the bottom seat and then at the end they paint it. So, we're playing catch-up. Once we, uh, able to get a better handle of them, now we can turn around and just, as we go to them, do a minimal inspection and then paint them and it's gonna be, uh, we're gonna be more, uh, efficient that way. But right now, we're kinda, you can't just throw paint on it and then the hydrant doesn't operate properly, so we gotta make sure that they're operating properly before we, so that's the thing and, you know, we can, our guys are, that's our mission, you know, uh, we tell them, you know, we get a call, we gotta make sure that hydrant is, uh, broke down at least to where we know, we feel comfortable that it's gonna operate on emergency and then we, then paint it. We don't have, uh, we don't wanna just go out there and throw some paint on them and then...
Sure, yeah, I mean, function over form, right? I mean, you want it to be functional, but at the same time, I mean, there, you do notice some ones that are kind of falling behind, but if you have a program, that's, that's great. Um, I remember when I first came on council, one of the very first budget workshops that we had, we talked about this idea of this asbestos cement, you know, at the time, we, we still had like 12 miles of asbestos cement in, in the, in the system. Is that on?
About 11 miles. So, one, these 450 tons will actually cover for about 1.25 miles.
Okay.
That's, again, that's...
So it's slowly going away?
Asbestos and gallons, so. We get 10% this year, we're still running about 10 years to live in there. Now, we're still looking for some grants, we did this in the past unsuccessfully, hopefully in the coming years, we'll be more successful and we'll get some grants.
But it's an area of focus and you're trying to...
Yeah, that's our focus.
To that point, we've had, in the last year, we've had three major breaks, two sewer, wastewater and one, one water, so, yeah, we've gotta get on a, on a more proactive basis 'cause the problem is, it's, it's, the cost to do it, you know, reactively is a lot more than proactively and so we gotta get to that point where we're, we're looking ahead and say, okay, this pipe is 30 years old, it hadn't broken yet, but let's fix it before it breaks or let's, or let's replace it, so, um, yeah, that's where we'd like to get to.
Asbestos cement pipes, comedy issues, um, the old orange comedy system that we acquired back in 2005, so it's typically in those areas and, you know, it's not formulaic, I have to do the...
And it's costly, I mean, it's just, you, you can't go out there and rip it out, you gotta make sure you, uh, doing, following the proper guidelines to dispose of it properly.
Great. And then the last question, so, I was kinda going through, because, and, under the Asset Management Program, maybe this is more of a question for Edward. So there's nine instances of the $50,000 earmark for Asset Management System. Are we really saying it's a $450,000 system?
That is what, um, that is what was put in the budget in the very beginning. The prior Public Works Director actually was here and built these budgets, as you know, Kevin put these together for us and did a good job getting it all together. I personally think from what we've, what we've, what we've received from some outreach that we've gotten, that it's too much, we, I think it's too much. Um, and so we're gonna be, between now and September, you're gonna see that scaled back down. I think we're gonna scale it down because we've been hearing, you know, we've been hearing like 200, 200,000, not 450, whatever, we've been hearing 200. So I think you're gonna, you're not, I don't think, you're gonna see that scaled back down 'cause we've also got some savings and if we let some other software go, we can use those funds. So I think the number that we're seeing is around 200,000 for a good program citywide, so that number, that, those are...
Yeah, can we just see a kind of a justification, just, you know, what, what we're getting with that cost?
Right.
Uh, because, I mean, that's a high, especially 450,000, I mean, that's just...
Yeah, no, we're seeing two, closer to 200, so I'm, I will tell you that we will be bringing that down closer to 200, which will free up some dollars for some of these other areas that we need. And then, once we go out to bid for that, once we decide what we're gonna get, we go out to bid, get that product, if, we'll, we'll see how the funding comes out, but we're seeing closer to 200, not 400.
Again, we can have some savings with...
Right, and we'll have savings from other software packages, so probably be less than that, hopefully.
And it's something that we're lacking, a real Asset Management Program. We have software that we use to do our maintenance, but we need a, a Asset Management Program.
Good.
Any more questions? All right. Next one is, uh, Wastewater Maintenance Budget Line 3171. Activities and Programs Managed on, under this division is Sewer Lift Stations Maintenance Program, Generator Inspection Program, Bypass Pump Inspections Program, Order Control, Sewer Pipeline Inspections, Sewer Pipeline Cleaning, Sewer Lateral and Valve Inspections Program, and Sewer Manhole Inspections. Personnel, we had a budget increase. Uh, this is also due to moving personnel from other divisions to, uh, I guess, have a better maintenance, uh, on our, this assets. Um, we moved four from, uh, like Glenn said, 3191, back to our division since Collections and Lift Stations is closer together. Um, I guess they work closer together, so it made sense to put them back on 3171. Uh, we also moved a couple of the guys from, uh, three guys from, uh, construction into this to fill in some other gaps. Um, you got on this division, you got one Utility Maintenance Manager, uh, eight Sewer Lift Station Maintenance, uh, Full-Time Employees, and then, uh, the other ones are in the Collections, which is, they do the inspections, sewer, uh, manhole inspections, laterals, valves, and stuff. Supply and Other Services, we had an increase of 30.9%. Uh, that's due to Utility Service being moved into this budget. Um, that's the electrical bills for all the lift stations. They, uh, we put in where it's, now it's on the right, uh, budget line. Uh, Operation, uh, Operating Supplies also, you see an increase there of 25.5% and that's due to put, uh, extra money in there on our order control. And this budget, uh, we are barely gonna have enough there to, you know, finish off the year and, on what we need. Uh, next, we increased it a little bit to be able to run a couple pilots to see if there's a better chemical out there to have a, I guess, uh, either most, more cost-efficient order control or a chemical that works better for, that can also improve, help us and also improve the plant and maybe, uh, give them some help on what we send to them. Capital Outlay, we had a budget increase, uh, 768,000. That's, uh, due to our Renewal and Replacement Program on their lift stations. Uh, we put in there 1.1 million. Uh, this year, we have some money in there as well and, um, our lift stations are only meant to last 20 years. We have some there that's been running forever and we continue to run them and repair them as needed, but we need a program there that, where we do a complete rehab, not just patch it in so that way it can keep going. We need to, uh, start replacing the electrical panels, relining what... Um, you know, and some of them already, the capacity is no longer sufficient, so they need to be upgraded overall, so that's money in there. And Vladimir has been working hard to try to get a, something going, a, or a program going so we can, uh, start laying out the foundation of that program and continue to improve the, or repair, replace our lift stations. Uh, equipment, we have a acquisition of a hundred KW, uh, generator, mobile K, uh, generator. Um, we currently have four in the fleet with a hundred and twenty-four lift stations. Sometimes it makes it difficult to move around and, you know, as we have big storms come out, power outages, so lift stations get hit hard, so we need to make sure that we constantly keep them pumped down so that way we don't have no major sewer backups. Uh, we have in there four, uh, new lift station pumps. Those are gonna be to replace, uh, some of these outdated pumps that are causing vibration issues as, at residential neighborhoods. Uh, we're not gonna, this is, get rid of them, we're gonna repurpose them and use them as backups on sites that, uh, vibration issues, but vibration is not an issue where they're out of residential neighborhoods. Um, putting there money for, uh, new crane truck and that's also to, uh, allow us to do better maintenance on, uh, the hundred and twenty-four lift stations, which, uh, it comes out they have two hundred and ninety-five submersible pumps. So, those constantly get blocked or just, you know, just doing the maintenance on them. We need a crane that, a better crane than what we have right now to be able to continue that, uh, maintenance. Uh, the one that we're looking to replace, it's, uh, oh-seven. And on crane, that's, that's, uh, very old 'cause it's constantly running, the engine is constantly running when you're out there at the site to be able to do the maintenance on them. Uh, granted, on this one, uh, the chassis is oh-seven, but the, the body, uh, the, the bed itself is older, it's probably more of a ninety-five. It was, that's the way it was, um, uh, we saved money back then, but, um, it's just, it's getting worn out. Uh, and here, we also got the intangible assets of fifty thousand. We got a budget increase of fifty-nine point seven percent.
Any questions? Mr. Smith? Anybody? Good. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Edward, you wanna wrap it up?
Yeah, I'd like to, if you, um, so, so-
Can I clarify one piece before you do?
Sure.
Um, the, 'cause I wanna, on the street light that, that Doug you had mentioned before, on that line, because it's, is it a commingled effect? Because that particular line, like the one point two million, it going down, that's how much we expend to pay for the lights on, right?
Correct.
And so, is there a, a subset of that number that would indicate any outlay that we have for, or would outlay totally be in the capital outlay section for any streetlights?
Yeah, what, there, what's embedded in that number, the reason you see it going down, we haven't taken any streetlights out or anything, or we haven't done any changes to that. What happens is, with the streetlight program, the way it works, is if you have new lights installed, you have to pay an upfront, what they call a CIAC, construction in aid of, or capital in aid of construction. So, you have to pay Duke that fee upfront one time to install them. Then after that, you just pay the, the monthly charge. So, what you have is, last year, if you recall, we put lights in. We added lights in, on, on Park Avenue, we've added some in, in, um, in the, the southern half of the city, we've added some lights, we added some to the park. If you noticed, I don't know if you've noticed or not, but the, the lights, they moved them closer, they moved them to the sidewalk and made them match our, our lights around the outside. If you drive around the city, you'll notice that, um, and I think it's from Michael Gladden all the way to just past Katelyn Nelson Park, they're slowly changing out all of the, the ones that we have now to LED. Um, so, what happened was, because we did a lot of changes last year like that, that number was high 'cause we had to pay some out of, some upfront out of pocket, so now it's coming back down to where it needs to be.
And that, that's a good point. Because really, that should be indicative of us putting more into the system, because right now, we're in such a growth mode as a city anyways, you would hardly ever see that number go down, 'cause we're always adding more into the system and energy costs certainly aren't going down. Duke's not gonna go down on the energy cost, so, okay, fair point. So, really, we should interpret that, that delta being kind of funds that we did put into the system that we may not be doing this year.
Correct. And we'll see, like I said, and on the streets one, um, and I will tell you, I've been beating myself up every night over the streets fund, and I have, even when I was here before, that's always been the toughest fund. And you'll see that, you see that in, in every place, even with county. That's why the county, you see the county's working on some stuff from their one cent sales tax or whatever initiative they see going on, because that is an area everybody's struggling. We're struggling in transportation. It just, the gas tax and just does not keep up with that, that source. So, you see people struggling with that everywhere. But I, hopefully, like I said, I, I have my fingers crossed, I hope that I am very conservative and I've, the, the revenue estimating council's supposed to meet Friday, and I hope that, I'm thinking twenty-five percent, and I hope they're thinking twenty, because it will, it will help all the way around. Um, but at the end of the day, we're at their, their beck and call when it comes to that, so we'll see where they, they come out. But they meet Friday and they say they're gonna have estimates next week, we will see. Um, I think they're waiting to see what actually is happening with the, the last several months of sales tax before they actually tell us what we can kinda project out into the future. And with, with the numbers where they are today, what they're seeing with, with the, um, with the COVID, who knows where that number will be. But, so, along those lines for tonight, so I, I, first, what I'd like to say is, I'd like to thank the staff. I know this is probably one of the first years you've seen it where we've let the director, I mean, the, the managers actually present their items, but I thought it was very, very important that they underst, they, they know their budgets, they know the programs they need. I tried to listen over the last year to them about where they had deficiencies. You saw the fats and oil, the grease program, we weren't, nobody was monitoring that. We were able to find some efficiencies in the current positions that we have to put people in places for those issues that are compliance issues, the maintenance of our facilities. It's important that we keep the facility, it's a requirement that you keep the facilities mode and maintained around all of the tanks and all of the equipment is a requirement. So, I think, I wanna thank the staff, they've done a good job with that. We've worked hard, we have been beating these numbers up like crazy, so, um, and I wanted you to see the whole picture. I wanted you to see from them, being out in the field, what they're dealing with, what they're having to, you know, what their issues are, what their, their problems are, see the whole picture. Now, when we come with you in September, some of these bigger numbers that you saw will be scaled back a little bit, but it's the program that we're getting established so that going forward, you know, we have this rehab lift station, we have this, this, um, backflow program. We have these programs in place and, um, you can't do it all in one year, but at least we're on the right track of where we're trying to be proactive instead of reactive, so.
And getting the rate study to know where we are with, with all the, you know, 'cause we haven't had one done in a while, and so we just, we need to make sure that we're, we're charging the right amount of money to not only supply that service, but for the depreciation and the re, you know, whatever we need to do as, as, as a pro, proactive, you know, fix or, or proactive replacement versus wait till it tears up and then try to figure out where to come up with the money, so.
Well, and they're digging around now, the rate people are in digging around in everything now, and we wanna make sure we have the house in order. Do we have the right people in the divisions? 'Cause at the end of the day, the rate study, they come in and you give them, you give them the information, they look at the information. If you tell them you need six people in this area, that's where they're gonna, they're gonna take you as management, is that's what you need. So, I, it was very important, I think, that, that the managers and everything of their departments be able to look and see, where are you, where do you need a, where do you, where you have a compliance problem and what do you need? You need a person that monitors that? Well, then, let's get all of that in order first so that everything's covered, that needs to be covered, and you can perform those functions going forward and on a program so that when they're doing the rate study, they know we need this maintenance program so much every year to stay up to it. We need to change these, these lines out that you're talking about, and we need three hundred, four hundred thousand a year to continue to stay on that path. I think that's critical that we have all of our ducks in a row, so when they look at it and set rates, that they've got, they've got all the right pieces, so.
I really wanna echo that with the staff. I've been really impressed, from fire right on across the board, I, I think we've done a good job digging in and finding where we can make savings by being more efficient. And, uh, it's always, that's always been my mode, is fiscal sustainability and being ahead of that curve, not waiting till this builds up. And as hard as it is this year with all of those things, we've gotta keep that in mind and not let something be kicked down the road. I want the people that follow us to be in a real good position and healthy position, so, you know, we'll, it's, we got a task ahead of us here, but, uh, I'm also excited. I just feel like that's the same mindset that we carry, and I think it's gonna be good for our city in the long run.
Mr. Smith?
I, I appreciate the fact that staff comes to present, the managers themselves, present their budgets, because they're the ones that actually in the field and they know what they need. And for us to be able to hear their passion and their desires as to what they would like to have and what it takes in order for them to work efficiently and do the job, uh, to make our city the kind of city that we're gonna be proud of. And so, uh, I'm confident, you know, when you go to your meeting, I'll tell you fifteen percent, and we're gonna be able to do a whole lot more than we thought we could.
Can I write that down and hold you to that?
Hope somebody's listening.
It would make my life easier.
Mr. Becker?
No, great job. I mean, it's run smoothly so far and hopefully it continues in tomorrow and we get to where we need to go.
All right. Can we just throw in, Edward, you've done a tremendous job.
Yeah, that, that is for sure.
It's the team behind me, so, and it's you guys giving me-
Hey, we still have one more day, let's-
Giving me, yeah, so wait.
Get ahead of ourselves.
Too much, yeah.
We'll wait till September.
Yeah. All right. Thanks, everybody.